San Rafael City Council Meeting, the first one of 2023, Tuesday, January 17. And I will request the Deputy City Clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz is absent tonight. Vice Mayor Yorin Scolati.
Present.
Mayor Kate. Mayor Kate, thank you.
Four of us are here this evening, so welcome. We are glad you are here. If you're in the chambers or Zooming and virtually. This is our first meeting of 2023. And we look forward to working with all of you collaboratively. With San Rafael residents, businesses, nonprofits, and the county Marin on solutions to all of our challenges. Thank you for participating in these efforts in the past and in the year to come. So since our last council meeting, we have experienced record-breaking storms. And that needs to be called out this evening. I want to recognize the hard work of city staff to keep our city working well during those storms. Department of Public Works, San Rafael Police Department, the Fire Department, and the OES, which is the Operish- Office, Office of Emergency Services, that the staff, they're the ones that were responding and on the front lines, making sure that our residents were safe. They showed up when our community needed them, and we are so grateful to them. San Rafael was comparatively fortunate in that we had some localized only, I'll say only, because if it's in your own backyard, it's not an only. We had only localized flooding. We had many downed trees, some power outages, and a couple sites with live wires on the ground. We're very glad that no one touched those wires. And we did have one slide that caused a- closed a portion of a street. So thanks again to staff that kept the city running. And it seems like the big storms are behind us now. So we'll keep our fingers crossed that the worst is behind us. Before we get to the agenda, if this is your first meeting, we like to include a land acknowledgement. So we acknowledge that the present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Ranche Ria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement in stewardship practices that benefit us all. With that, I will turn it to the Deputy City Clerk, who can share how people can participate if they're not here in the room.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube. And members of the public can provide public comment by phone by calling 669-900-9128, using the meeting ID 899-2635-9885, and pressing *9 to raise your hand for comment. Or you can comment and watch directly through Zoom using the link on the agenda and using the raise hand feature through Zoom. If you experience technical difficulties, please email city.clerk@cityofsanrafil.org. Displayed on the podium and the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you reside in, or if from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom. Select the Live Transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We start our meetings with an open time for public expression. This is anything not on tonight's agenda. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment? If so, you can come down, say your name if you'd like, and where you're from. Not seen anyone. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to make public comment this evening?
Once again, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And to comment by phone, please press *9 to raise your hands. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press *6 to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a few hands.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Lori. I live in San Rafael. And I'd like to send out a big congratulations to DJ Allison. He was fabulous on the vice committee. The other reason I'm here is because I'd like to bring to somebody's attention that as of 6:25 this evening, that'll be today, there is a sign on Irwin and Third Street that talks about dining under the lights and that the Fourth Street is closed from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. every Thursday and Friday. And I thought that that ended a few months ago. So don't need an answer on it, but somebody needs to be aware of that because I see it every time I go up the freeway, and I wonder if that's really correct. Thank you very much, and Happy New Year to everybody.
Thank you. And yes, I see the Director of Department of Public Works nodding our head. I'd actually mentioned it a couple weeks ago. It keeps resetting itself, just so you know. So DPW, we're talking about the dining under the lights. And so they, DPW has been going and resetting. But for some reason, there's a little ghost in the machine, and it resets to the old message. So we will stay on it, and we will fix it. But thank you.
There are a couple more hands.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We sure can. Go ahead.
Great. This is Jeff Buschram in Sonoma, California. I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the city council and the staff. It was my pleasure to be employed there and serve the citizens of San Rafael. I was reminded of a conversation with former Police Chief Cam Sanchez. The topic was surrounding alcohol challenges with employees. The words that always stuck with me is, no matter what happens, I will try and make the individual whole as a human. And that's stuck with me throughout my career. I wanted to address an issue that I believe is missing the mark regarding workers' compensation. There's a stigma surrounding workers' comp, either stated or implied. We shouldn't engage with the individuals on comp, especially if they have hired counsel. It leaves the individual in a lonely existence with priorities often going unanswered. I want to express my thanks to the city staff for their help recently. They were all very responsive, very helpful, very courteous with all that. I do believe unfortunately that their contractor does not offer full disclosure. Therefore, the city staff really only knows what they're told. And comp is a very complex system. My buddy has been crushing the insurance actuaries of late. He's an Olympic survivor. And he's been dealing with an illness for many years. But before the staff there intervened, he spent too much time without proper support. The contractor was a nightmare. Improvement has been noted, though, after he was offered the proper support, which is very appreciative. The injured and the caregivers, his wife and his family are often the ones that suffer in silence. The contractor provided a lack of follow-through. My challenge to the city that I'm happy to help with is-
Thank you for your comment.
I have one more hand at this time.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. This is Ava Crisanti. And I wanted to let you know that I received a letter from your city attorney's office, an email last year after I had had to locate one of the SSA attorneys, one of the unhoused individuals, Marine Corps veteran, who was so sickened by the conditions in your police run interment camp under the freeway that he ended up in the ICU. No one could locate this guy. Apparently Officer Lynn Murphy, who was in charge there, was freaking out because he was totally missing. After I'd called everywhere, I finally did locate him in an ICU. And I then received an email from your city attorney's office indicating that he was going to be well taken care of. On December 14th, I found this gentleman shivering in a fetal position on, on the street outside Ritter Center in a, in a tent that was so small, it looked like it was almost designed for a child. And I was very concerned about this. I went to the county. I have not received any proper response about how he is faring. He was not, you know, he was not there when I went back as recently as a week ago. And it's very clear that regardless of what happened during the storm, prior to the storm, when the, it was, you know, very, very cold temperatures, freezing temperatures. There was frost everywhere. That not only had you sickened this man so badly that he ended up in ICU during the summer, but you had subsequently made it, made his life so hard that he ended up in a tent in December, December 14th. And I would just like to know when there's going to be an investigation.
Nice. I see no further hands. I'm just going to give it a couple more seconds.
Thank you.
I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back for council member reports. And we'll start with our newly appointed Vice Mayor, Yorin Scolati. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you. So, so yeah, it's been, I think, over the holidays. We, I have participated in many meetings and phone calls for the tenants from the 400 Canal that they were impacted by the fires. So really appreciate the collaboration between the city, our departments, the county, Canal Alliance, Voces del Canal, and all the community that is coming together to support these families. There is a GoFundMe fundraiser that they are doing, if you would like to participate. I don't know what is the best way to share that. But maybe I can just, not sure, put it on my social media. And people can go there and visit. So, so we'll continue working just to make sure that it's been like the worst time during the holidays. But that has taken most of my time, my family time. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. Two meetings I attended. One was the, my first Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. I was there with many folks, including Mayor Kate, the city manager, and Director Henkel. Much gratitude was felt and expressed for Vice Mayor Yorin Scolati's service on the Economic Development Subcommittee. We heard about regional and local updates around commercial office market as well as anticipation of receipt of the Economic Development Strategic Plan from Cosmott. We're looking forward to seeing what the results and recommendations are. And then on Friday, the 13th, toured Coleman Elementary School at the invitation of Superintendent Jim Hugaboom with Mayor Kate and the school principal Alex Peck. We had a chance to see the after-school programs amidst the rain. And it was great to see all the ways the kids were being enriched in the afternoon. Felt very familiar for the after-school programs I attended when I was a kid. Those are my report.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Bushy.
Thank you. I was sworn into the Marin Transit Board about two weeks ago and attended my first meeting of the Marin Transit Board. I'm happy to report that their return to pre-COVID levels continues apace. And they're nearing 90% of pre-COVID ridership. So very exciting news there. Very interesting to be back in the transit world. I also attended a meeting of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency Board and the San Rafael Sanitation Board.
Thank you. And I'll close by sharing I am the representative on SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. The numbers continue to, the ridership numbers continue to increase. When you look at October of 2019, so prior to COVID and October of 2022, it's well over 90% of the pre-COVID numbers, so slowly building back. We're on pace to reach the ridership goal for 2022, 2023 that was projected. And in a really big news, Congress approved $1.8 million in one of their appropriation bills. And that is for design of extension to Healdsburg. So you have to plan it before you can build it, and so that money is very critical. So, so thank you. And I will now turn to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Mayor Kate and City Council. I have, do have a few announcements tonight, but I just wanted to quickly add, based on the second public comment from former employee Jeff Buscher. I think he was in mid-sentence and was about to give us some input. And we're in regular contact with, with Jeff and the family. I see Nadine Atia Hay, our Administrative Services Director, is in the room. So I just want to make sure that Jeff knows that we'll reach out and make sure that we get the input that he wanted to give us. For a few announcements tonight, I have three. And I was just realizing that they all kind of relate to public works and transportation. The first one is that relates to B Street downtown. As you know, both C and D have been converted to two-way from one-way streets back in 2020. And B Street is still one-way southbound from Fifth to Second Street. And as a part of the Third Street Improvements Project, and as a second phase to those other conversions, staff has been looking at the conversion of B Street into two-way to join C and D. It helps us in a number of ways. One is place and fire access, ease of access to the streets, even traffic calming, things like that. So it's something that we're pursuing right now. And Public Works has put together a community meeting. If anyone is very interested and wants to hear more about it, it's tomorrow night. It's 6:00 p.m. and it's over Zoom. And the easiest way to find out more about the project and also the link for the Zoom meeting is our website, cityofsanrafil.org/BStreet-Conversion. So I know that there are some people that use B Street a lot that feel very strongly that it should be two-way, and others that would like to keep it one-way. So that's a good opportunity to weigh in and see what the latest plans are for, for that street and, and provide comments. Also, I wanted to thank TAM, the Transportation Authority of Marin, and MTC, the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, for their favorable recommendations and ultimate approvals, both at the TAM level and MTC level of a number of public works projects that our public work staff has put together and submitted through TAM and then to MTC. And which have been approved. It's, it's not as if these projects are going to happen tomorrow, though. This is kind of long-term, four-year funding. And MTC kind of portions out the funding from year to year, depending on what's, you're in design phase or construction phase. But, but there has been approved funding for a number of projects. I'm just going to list them quickly. One category is what is called OBAG III, which is the One Bay Area Grant. And it's the third round of that. That's why it's OBAG III. And it's focused on communities that have priority development areas. And San Rafael does have a couple priority development areas, which is why we are so successful with this particular grant source. The two grants under that category are to do specific plans or precise plans for those two priority development areas that we have in San Rafael. One of them's in the Canal neighborhood, and one of them is around North Gate and North San Rafael. So we received about $800,000 each to do more thorough planning for the future in both of those areas, which is going to be really exciting. And we, having recently done the precise plan for downtown, I, I think that we see kind of the value of that and how it could really spur things to happen in a, in a community. And then also in the One Bay Area Grant funding category, we're receiving about $3 million for Second and Fourth Street intersection. And for a lot of people, Second and Fourth run parallel, but they, they also intersect. And right at that intersection point, it's not optimal, the way that they do intersect. And it's something that spun on our list for a while. And, and about $3 million worth of funding through MTC that TAM was also recommending for us to study and make improvements to that intersection. And then the other category that they looked at was ATP or Alternative Transportation Program grant fundings. There was about $4 million funded for Canal neighborhood transportation improvements, including pedestrian transit, lighting, bike, and accessibility improvements. So we've already been making improvements in the Canal neighborhood and throughout San Rafael. But this is going to really allow us to make some really significant changes there with about $4 million worth of improvements, just specifically in that neighborhood. And then also looking in that neighborhood, MTC awarded funding to do a feasibility analysis of a pedestrian swing bridge, which has been in our plans as far back as I know of, for to see how to connect kind of the Canal neighborhood with the neighborhoods on the other side of the canal, including Montecito Plaza, San Rafael High, and even downtown, a quicker way through that area. So we will finally be able to use those funds in order to look at the feasibility, see what makes sense, what sort of permits would be required, and what makes the most sense for the community. So that's something that MTC approved as well. So we're really excited. These things have been in the work for many months, both at the TAM level and then more recently at the MTC level. So good news there. And then lastly, just kind of keeping in transportation land, I wanted to mention, I know a lot of people in our community follow SMART, the rail system. And there is a Citizens Oversight Committee. There's a, that has a vacancy that SMART is filling. And there's, the deadline has been extended. There's only a few more days, but the deadline's been extended to January 20th of this year. So I went to their webpage today. It's Sonoma Marin Train.org. And then there's a big button right on the homepage that says, "Apply to be a member of the Citizens Oversight Committee." So I thought there may be people in our community who are interested in doing that. It's an advisory committee established by the Board of Directors, comprised of community members to represent both Sonoma and Marin Counties. So I just wanted to bring those things up, and I'll turn it back to you, Mayor Kate. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for mentioning that last one. I should have mentioned it myself, but I'm glad because it's SMART. And I think there's more than one vacancy. So it's, it's kind of turning over the people, the board participants. So definitely, if you're interested in SMART, do apply. Thank you. I will receive public comment on the council member and city manager reports. Anyone in the chambers like to comment? Come on down. Yeah. And if you'd like, introduce yourself and what part of San Rafael that you're from, if you so choose. This is on the council member reports that we just gave.
I, yeah.
Okay.
The- Alvataria Gersel Park. Converting the road from a single lane to multiple lanes. No objection there, but some of the roads have not been restriped.
Okay.
So that when you're making a right turn, when a right, or a left turn, rather, when a left turn was no longer, was not allowed. There's a, the line doesn't go straight. It curves out. So you're stuck going over a single solid line, which might be confusing to some. And, you know, those roads seem to be designed for, for one-way traffic and not two-way traffic. So I'm just asking if the striping can be reviewed, one. And I was walking over to, I guess, is the FedEx Building on Irwin, going over near the KFC. And there's a crosswalk there, but there's no signage to say if you should, you can cross or not. So the "Walk, Don't Walk" sign, it doesn't exist on that light pole there. So I don't know if that street is being redesigned to eliminate that. But it was a little risky for me to run across the street, not knowing who was coming. That's really all I have.
No, thank you. And I, our director's listening, our Department of Public Works, so she's taking note of those comments. So thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Not seen anyone. Is there anyone online who'd like to comment on the city manager or council member reports?
And just to remind everyone, to comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. To comment by phone, please press *9 to raise your hand. And once you've heard the notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press *6 to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a couple of hands.
Thank you. I listened to the council members' reports and the city manager. And I'm confused why there's no update on the investigation surrounding the beating of the labor known as Mateo, the Latino, who was savagely beaten by San Rafael Police and unfairly charged by our district attorney. That seems to have fallen off the radar, and that seems to be what the city of San Rafael wants to do with a lot of things. I want to remind you that you have some unfinished business from 2022. Notably, the fact that your city attorney's office sent me an email indicating that your police officers were permitted to turn on and off their body camera at their own discretion. And this, this came up because I had heard many reports of Lynn Murphy, Officer Lynn Murphy, doing this, which is completely unacceptable and in violation of lexical policy. And, and your attorney then said, no, this is perfectly appropriate. And, and that shouldn't be. And I don't know why these things aren't on the agenda. They need to, there needs to be an update at every meeting about what you're doing with your police department to, to root out the corruption and the frequent lying. You still haven't corrected the lies that Lynn Murphy was able to tell about the death of Bridget Tusher in 2020, which Lynn Murphy herself was in part responsible for. These sorts of things, you let them fester, and then they blow up in, in something like the, the beating of Mateo case. But you know you'll get away with it because you just will be able to sweep it under the rug. I need to tell you that these things are not going to be so easily swept under the rug. I need to tell you that these things are not going to be so easily swept under the rug. They are, it is important that you have a functional police department, and that is what you do not.
There is one more hand at this time.
Okay.
Hi there. This is Lori. Regarding what Jim just mentioned about B Street being on the Third Street Project, I was at every single public meeting regarding Third Street and B Street becoming two ways was never on anything that I ever saw. In addition, this was discussed, at least it was on the agenda for the last BPAC meeting. And myself and six other people that I know could not get into that meeting by the city website URL. And I had them check directly from the website, so I didn't send them a link because I didn't want to give them the wrong link. In addition, at the Federation meeting the other night, this meeting tomorrow was listed as January 19th or January 18th, Thursday. Excuse me. And January 18th is actually Wednesday. That did get changed today on Nextdoor. I don't know if anybody saw it. I happened to notice it. But it's also not under the general public meetings where the city council meetings and the parks meetings are all located. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no other hands. I'm just going to give it a few more seconds.
I see no further public comment. Thank you. I'll close the public comment. That was on our council member and city manager reports. And I'll ask the city manager just to respond about community concerns regarding the police incident where we are.
Sure. The best place for information that's regularly updated is our website, cityofSanRafel.org/policincident. It's all one word. And there we have information that includes kind of what the city has been hearing as we've been going to various community meetings. And we've been having kind of town hall, open house types of meetings. And also been having more focused meetings as well with individual groups. Talking about getting feedback on the police department and policing in San Rafael. So at that website, there's all of that information of kind of the information that we've received to date and the process of what happens next in terms of the response for actions that are taking place. There's a frequently asked questions there, which also includes things like, is the city looking at doing some sort of police oversight, which the city is, and that's listed out there? And also a diagram of the investigation process. These things are related to each other, but but separate things. One is kind of overall, more broadly, policing in San Rafael and oversight of a police department. And then separately, there's the issue of the particular investigation that was mentioned. And there is a kind of a process chart that shows kind of the different steps of the investigation. So people can see, you know, why, why would it take as long as it's taking? And there's some timeline sorts of things there as well to show about how long those things take, depending on the complexity. So it'll continue to be a great place to get an update on on what's going on with all of those. Again, it's cityofSanRafel.org/policincident.
Thank you. And if I remember correctly, there are places on that website where people can sign up either through WhatsApp or through email if they want to know anytime someone's posted or more information.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll turn to the consent agenda. Are there any items my colleagues would like to hold from the consent calendar? No? Okay. I'll open a public comment. This is on consent calendar items A through F. Is there anyone in the chambers who'd like to comment? Consent agenda. Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone who'd like to comment on the consent agenda, A through F?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And to comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've heard that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I don't see any hands raised at this time. Give it a few more seconds. I do see one.
Yes, I know. I noticed that you have something on your consent calendar about the ADA. And I'd like to know from the city manager, since he was prompted by my last question about the beating of Mateo to actually provide some sort of response, which I I thought was totally unsatisfactory. I'd like to know why it was that the city of San Rafael was permitted to keep disabled individuals in an SSA slash internment camp under a freeway that did not meet any basic healthcare guidelines and where no one who was medically vulnerable or disabled should have been kept. There is still no investigation of how the city with the complicity of the county was able to do this. And there is no, Kate Collin, really, Mayor San Rafael, with Damon Connolly, the D1 Supervisor at the time, and Senator Mike McGuire are the people who devised that camp. They are the people who signed the lease and put it together. And there is still no investigation. We don't expect you to investigate yourselves. But there should be a call for an outside investigation. Susan Yoder died in that camp. And she was clearly disabled. So was the black US Marine Corps veteran who was so sickened by that camp that he ended up in ICU last summer. Something is desperately wrong. And the fact that you're not addressing this and that that you're hoping that your, you know, your principal critic, which is me, is is going to just stop asking these questions is is frankly not realistic. I would like to know from the city manager why there is still no investigation of.
I see no other hands at this time. I'll just give it a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will bring it back for a motion on the consent agenda.
A move that we approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Hi.
Councilmember Hill.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Yornz Gilati.
Hi.
Mayor Kate.
Hi. That motion carries four zero. Thank you. We do have a special presentation proclamation to DJ. We do public comment prior to the proclamation. So if there's anyone in the chambers who would like to say something about this proclamation, now would be the time. Come on down. Deputy City Clerk, could you maybe take the microphone down to help out? Because it looks probably a little tall. Come down.
Thank you, Mayor, for helping our community.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment before we get to the proclamation? And I would, I would hazard a guess that young woman is relative of DJ Allison, who we're about to honor in a moment. Not seen anyone else in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on the proclamation?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And to comment by phone, please press star nine to raise your hand. Once you've heard that notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see a hand at this time.
Thank you, Eva Crisanti. I'd like to encourage the city of San Rafael to stop giving these sort of commendations and proclamations. It's it's you, you know, especially for pedestrian bicycle advisory. As a lifetime cyclist who's never driven a car and who is frequently riding through San Rafael, the flooding on the streets, the the, you know, you've done well with a lot of help from the county. In some areas, you've left the most vulnerable areas, the places where people really rely on their bicycles for transportation to and from work. You've left those areas extremely dangerous and and hazardous. And this is the sort of thing. And and having the kid come up and and say, thank you to the mayor, it's all very cute, but there were serious problems in the city. And I would ask the city, you know, it should be taking care of the working class. It should be taking care of the poor. If it's receiving millions of dollars from the state and the county to care for unhoused individuals, it should be meeting basic standards for that instead of making people sick and getting people killed in an internment camp. And I'm sorry, but these sort of encomiums to, you know, your, you know, your volunteers, your handpicked commissioners who will never adequately criticize you on the very issues that they're supposed to, such as actual bike and pedestrian safety for the most vulnerable members of the community, that should be put on hold until you actually fix something.
Any additional public comment on the proclamation for DJ?
I see no hands. I'll just give it another couple of seconds. I see no further public comment.
Okay, then I'll have my colleagues join me and Mr. Allison. We'll kind of have you stand right over here. You'll stand over here. We're still kind of, I don't know, COVID-like, but I'm so glad that you're here and it was lovely to have your daughter make a few comments. So I, that's a tough thing to do in a big room like this. So I'm glad we get to read this proclamation celebrating your years on the BPAC. So whereas DJ, it says Daniel, but I'm going to call you DJ because Daniel, I'm like, who is that? Go by DJ, has served on the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee for the city of San Rafael from 2014 to 2022. And you've served as chair from 2017 to 2020. And whereas DJ served in an advisory capacity to the BPAC and became an integral part of the committee, attending numerous tours and events and taking great pride in representing the city of San Rafael. And whereas DJ provided advice and insight in relation to a variety of projects and initiatives that include the preparation of the Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan a couple of years ago, Third Street Rehabilitation Project, which is ongoing, the Francisco West Cycle Track, the Second Anderson Multi-Use Pathway, and provided important insights towards many private developments. And whereas DJ served on many subcommittees, shaping the future of walking and bicycling in San Rafael. He also served as a BPAC representative to the 2040 General Plan Steering Committee for three years. And you also established the seed for Vision Zero. And whereas DJ's commitment to the city of San Rafael was evident in the passion that you brought to the BPAC and your dedication to ensuring that each solution improved the quality of life in San Rafael. Now, therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation to you for your important contributions and community service to the city of San Rafael. You'd like to say a few words? We'd love to hear from you. We'll put you on the spot.
So I'll just, real quick, I joined the BPAC in 2014 because my, I had a newborn daughter. And I didn't think that biking and pedestrian being a pet was safe enough. So I joined with the goal of it being better for my kids.
We can't think of a better reason to serve civically. So thank you. We'd love to take a photo. This is your certificate. All right, switching gears, very much so. We have the first item on our public hearing is Award of Public Work Contracts. And I will turn it over to, I see Director Miller here for this presentation. I'll turn it to you.
Hi, thank you, Mayor and council members for having us tonight. I'm April Miller. I'm the Director of Public Works. I'm here just to introduce Joanna Quach. She's our Senior Civil Engineer. She's the person who supervises our capital improvement program team. And so she's going to present today. We can figure out how it works. So thank you.
Yeah, no, take a moment because we don't see it yet on the screen. There we go. All right.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and city council members for having me here tonight. As Director Miller introduced, my name is Joanna Quach, and I'm the Senior Civil Engineer for Public Works. And tonight I will be talking about our Public Works contract policy. As a charter city, our contract policy is governed by the municipal code, which sets the bidding and awarding procedures for public works construction contracts. It also lists the dollar amounts for contracts where a city council award is required. For general law cities, they follow the procedures and dollar amount limits set forth in UPCA, which is reviewed every five years by their commission based on current construction cost. And it was last updated in 2019 and is expected to be revised and updated again in 2024. Here we have a comparison between the city's contract policy, which was last updated in 2017, and the UPPA limits. As you can tell from this table here, the city's dollar amounts have fallen behind in all three categories, which includes contracts for that are exempt from competitive bidding, minor informal contracts, and major formal contracts. Although there's only a two-year difference, you can see from this graph here that there has been a trend of increasing construction costs between 2017 and 2019, and more significantly in the recent years. As such, our recommendation is to amend our current municipal code section to remove the current set dollar amount limits and adopt a resolution to reference the dollar amounts in from UPCA for future public works construction contract awards. This will ensure that the city's limits will be automatically updated and adjusted when UPCA UPCA limits are updated. Also, in alignment with city's equity goals, we're also incorporating general neutral language into this municipal code update. This concludes my presentation and our Assistant City Attorney and I are available for any questions.
Thank you, Joanna. Any questions from the council? Yes, Councilmember Hill.
Yes, in the staff report, it talked about how some cities fully opt in to, and I realize you can pronounce this way, but it's UPCA, so thanks for making that. What are the benefits of, well, for cities to opt in versus not opt in? As a, as a charter city, we're opting to not opt in. And basically, what are the benefits to not opt in as we are doing?
Right. So if we were to opt into UPCA, then we would be bounded by their policies and procedures for, you know, certain awards and bidding requirements. However, if we were to just adopt their their dollar amount limits, we're able to retain the city's flexibility and rights as a charter city to make updates and changes as we need or as we see fit as a local agency.
So to elaborate on bidding requirements, is that different requirements that bidders would put into a request for proposal? What are the types of things that it might govern?
Yeah, for the most part, contractors don't really necessarily pay attention to what our limits are. They just bid on the job with based on the numbers. So it doesn't necessarily affect the contractors. They're just looking at what the bid list is and adding their their quantities in there. We do have other requirements, like sometimes when we have federal projects, we have to follow the whole federal procedures, which has a different set of requirements that are different from necessarily our, you know, what our municipal code says. But besides, it says, you know, make sure you follow those. So just kind of, that's what it varies the most for contractors is when it's, when there's certain funding sources. But it just allows us to have more flexibility in kind of how we advertise or how we, for instance, just how we read, read the bids out loud. I think right now we've changed it so that we can read it virtually, so that we can accommodate people. So they don't no longer have to come in person. We actually do a program called Bid Express. So it's, they collect all of the a program called Bid Express. So it's, they collect all of the bids and so we don't have to have people drive down and drop them off to us anymore. And so we've kind of upgraded those procedures and we can do that because we have the flexibility to do that. I'm not sure if UPCA has, you know, caught up to things like that yet. So just, I, I'm not as familiar with all of those details.
Got it. And one more question, which is, this is more from the perspective of making development in Marin overall a more consistent process for developers. Do, do we feel that this is creating consistency for development in just that San Rafael comes in line with UPCA?
Yeah, so as Director Miller had mentioned, you know, contractors don't really necessarily look at the bid amounts and stuff when they're proposing for a project. So there wouldn't really be like a difference between whether we opt into UPCA or not. Because, you know, they, based on what we're doing now, we're using Bid Express to collect, to can, collect proposals and submittals from contractors and we're able to operate still to, you know, like perform our work as necessary.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Not seeing any. I'll open up for public comment. Looking in the chamber for anyone who would like to comment on this item. Not seeing anyone. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on this item? The Award of Public Works Contracts.
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands at this time. I will give it a few more seconds. I see no further public, or no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the council for their own comments and then a motion. So I'll start with you. Have any comments that you'd like to make on this item, Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, just that this is very sensical and thank you for bringing us in line with where we actually need to be to make certain that we can be as responsive as we need to be for public works projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Same comment. Thank you so much for the report and for looking into this.
Thank you. Councilmember Pushy?
Seems like a very orderly update and thank you for watching all of these things and bringing them forward to us so that we can be in step with the agencies around us.
I agree. Now, thank you. And it's nice to tie it to, to up whatever that terrible acronym is. So we won't have to keep bringing it back. So that's very streamlined. So thank you. With that, I would request a motion and you, it's very specific to waive the reading because we're going to have the Deputy City Clerk waive the reading. So.
I think we have to first move. So I move that we waive further reading of the ordinance and refer to it by title only and introduce the ordinance.
A second. Moved in second and I guess you read it and then you take roll call? Okay?
Please.
Yes.
An ordinance of the City of San Rafael City Council amending Chapter 11.50 of Title 11 of the San Rafael Municipal Code titled Public Works Contract Policy.
Thank you. We'll have roll call on this item.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yornz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. We have an additional action item on this. Right? So request a motion on that?
I'll move that we adopt a resolution setting dollar amount limits for Award of Public Works Contracts.
Second.
Moved and seconded roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yornz Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you both. Thank you, Joanna. Thank you, Director Miller. Our next agenda item is a Tenant Relocation Assistant Benefit Resolution. And I see our Assistant City Attorney has joined us. Welcome, Genevieve. I will turn it over to you.
Just give me one moment to get this.
Of course. Doesn't look like we're quite there yet.
You are sharing.
There we go.
Thank you, Deputy City Clerk and apologies for the delay there. Good evening. I'm here to give you a presentation on a proposed tenant relocation benefits policy. And this is under California Health and Safety Code Section 17975. So this provision of the Health and Safety Code requires owners of rental property to pay relocation benefits to tenants. And the amounts are owed when a tenant is displaced from their unit due to uninhabitable conditions. And they're displaced by an order to vacate that's issued by the jurisdiction. So in this case, if the city were to issue a notice to vacate to a unit, the benefits, this section is triggered and benefits have to be paid under certain conditions. So examples are fire, you brought up earlier, the, the event that happened at 400 Canal, that would be an example of when benefits are owed. Fire, flood, perhaps structural issues with a building where a building official deems that it's unsafe to occupy. So things of that nature can all trigger it. Now, there are two conditions under which an owner is not required to pay benefits. The first is where the tenant or tenant's guest caused or substantially contributed to making the, the unit uninhabitable. And then the second is where the condition is caused by a natural disaster or an event beyond the control of the owner. And the owner did not cause or contribute to the condition. So if either of these two conditions are present, the owner is not required to pay relocation benefits under the code. So the amount of benefits that are owed is summarized here. So first, the owner has to pay two months of the fair market rent for the unit. And then that amount is added to an amount that's sufficient for the tenant to pay utility service deposits and that's determined by the local enforcement agency. And the third is return of any security deposit that the tenant has with, that's being held by the owner. If the owner does not pay within the timeframes that are prescribed under the law, in most cases, that's within 10 days of the notice to vacate. The owner is then liable to the tenant for an amount that's one and one-half times the amounts that are owed. So here's just an example. This is just for illustration purposes. But for a three-bedroom unit, the fair market rent is currently at 4,111. So at two times that, it would be 8,222. We've looked into utility service deposits. They're not typically paid in this area. So in this case, we're saying that it would be zero owed on that portion. And then in this case, the tenant has security deposit of $2,000. So in this example, a tenant would be owed $10,222. So what happens if the owner fails, neglects, or refuses to pay tenant benefits? Under the law, the local enforcement agency can, at its discretion, advance the benefits to the tenant. And then that local enforcement agency can then turn to the owner and collect those payments from the owner. So if the city, as the local enforcement agency advances benefits, the city can collect from the owner the amounts that the city paid to the tenant on behalf of the owner. We could collect a penalty of half of the amount paid not to exceed $10,000 and add the city's actual costs, both direct and indirect, in doing the advanced payments and in the collection thereof. So what we have proposed this evening is a city policy on when the city and under what conditions the city would advance the tenant relocation benefits. It is entirely optional and it would be on a case-by-case basis. So what we're proposing in the policy is that the city manager would be authorized to use city funds to advance payments to a tenant. If, and there would be two requirements. First, the tenant is in a multifamily, multi-unit structure. And we have sufficient funding. So there would need to be available appropriations. And the amount, the total amount paid in, for any one event would not exceed the city manager's authority, which is currently at 75,000. And then if it was above that unit, the policy would require the city manager to come to the council for approval. The, the policy, we've put in a number of factors that the city manager might consider in determining whether to pay the, the benefits or, or advance the benefits in this case. So it could be the number of tenants and units affected, certainly the total amount of benefit payments, the likelihood of recovery from the city and any penalties and costs that would be owed by the owner. The administrative costs that it would take the city both to, to advance the payments and collect them from the owner. And then also whether the tenants have received other benefits from maybe the federal government, state, county, or another source. So these benefits that are required under the section of the code are cumulative. So they are not in place of any other kind of benefit. They're in addition to other benefits that may be available. So the city manager might consider whether these tenants are being paid and taken care of through other sources to determine whether the, the city would do the advancements. The policy requires the city manager to then seek reimbursement from the owner. And that would include the penalties that we discussed at half the amount of payment and the city's costs. The process begins with sending the owner an itemized accounting of the benefits paid and the penalties and costs. And then to take a legal action if necessary or impose a lien on the property, which is one of the, the options that's written into the code. And the code does require appeal rights. So in the policy, we have two different processes for appeal. The first is where the owner of the property wants to appeal the, the city's order to pay relocation benefits. For example, the owner might challenge that they're not required to pay under the law. So the owner can appeal to the city and then the city manager, a decision would be final in that case. And then the second category is where the owner would appeal a demand for reimbursement. So if the city decides to step in because the owner refuses or fails to pay, then, and pays, then the owner can then appeal when the city collects for reimbursement. And that process is outlined in the code. So it would be the city manager's decision on the first level of appeal. And then the city manager's decision is then appealable to the city council for a decision. And that is the end of my presentation. So I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll start with the Vice Mayor. Questions on the item?
Yes, thank you so much. I'm very excited about having this actually as a policy. My question is, when, so the 10 days when it gets activated is from the moment that the city sends the letter? It's not from the day of the incident?
It, it depends. There's different circumstances that's written into the code depending on whether the tenants left before a notice or if there might have been time to plan for the notice and there's a, a receipt of a notice before the tenants move. I don't have the dates. I mean, they're, they're in the code and there's different, there's different timeframes. But the typical one is that once the city issues the notice to, the order to vacate, there is a 10-day timeframe.
And does it have like a limit on how, how many days? Like if it takes a little bit longer for the city to make a decision to send the letter, does it have like a time limit for the city to send that letter?
There's no time limit for the city to send a letter. But there, but the owner's requirement to pay maybe might be triggered once the event occurs and the tenants move out. So that would be one of the other alternative circumstances. So like I said, there's different, depending on the circumstances of each case, the timeframes might be a little bit different.
Okay, okay, great. Yeah, thank you so much. Thank you. Councilmember Bushy, questions?
I'm lost in the notices here. So let's, how is this going to work in a, in a real world way? So an event occurs on, let's say a fire. Let's say there's, a, a, a fire occurs and I guess the, the fire department on red tags it issues. This is, this is no longer habitable. Okay, at this point, the tenants are moving out. The landlords know that the place has been on fire. But nobody's digging through the, the statutes. So, so how does, how does the tenant find out that they have this right? How does the city find out that the landlord hasn't been, hasn't paid this? And then how does the tenant get to the city?
Yep. So a typical circumstance would be in a case that you just raised a fire and the tenants are immediately displaced. One of the first determinations that the city as the official needs to make is the cause. Because like I mentioned earlier, depending on the causation is going to depend on whether this provision of the code is triggered. For example, if a tenant causes a fire, for example, then an owner would not be required to pay under this provision of the code, right?
No, I'm, I'm at a much more nuts and bolts sort of, of level.
Yep.
The tenants are sitting in a hotel somewhere. How do they find out that they have the right to demand this on, from their landlord?
Right. So once the city determines that this section of the code is triggered because the causation is such that it, it is the owner's responsibility to pay, then the city will issue the order to vacate and the order, the notice to the owner to pay. And can send copies to the tenants as well. So the tenant should find out through that process by the owner being issued the city's order as well as the tenant's receipt thereof. And then the city will track demand of response from the owner within the timeframe that they have in fact paid the tenants. And so the city will wait. So for example, if we're under the 10-day time clock, then the city will, after that 10 days expires, demand a response from the owner that they either paid or if they haven't paid, what is their position with regard to payment? If they decide to appeal, then they would need to file that appeal within that 10-day timeframe. Then the city, then there's an appeals process. That happens very quickly if it's just the order to pay because That happens very quickly if it's just the order to pay because we know that the tenants are still, like you said, in a hotel waiting for their payment. So in that case, it's a very quick five-day business day turnaround to determine the appeal, to, to hear the appeal from the owner to make the final decision that the owner is required under the law to pay. If the owner does not pay, then the city can make that decision then to advance the benefits. And then collect later. But at that point, the tenants have the, the payment in hand.
Right. But then, but I, I see, so that, that it's on the city to make the initial determination, send the initial notices to both parties on regarding this. So they're informed and the, the city has, has on taken over control over the, to ensure the dispersment of these funds.
That's correct.
Perfect. I see how this can work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, thank you, Genevieve. I have two questions. First is, are other municipalities doing anything like this? Or are we doing this to make certain that we're protecting our community members from circumstances that, you know, some folks are, are vulnerable when these things happen? Is, is, or, in other words, are we breaking new ground on this or are other municipalities already doing something like this?
You, you know, I, I don't know the answer to that. We haven't, you know, kind of, kind of compared this policy to other jurisdictions. However, the code does require that a locally adopted policy is in place for reimbursement. So that's part of the reason why we're advancing this policy. Whether other jurisdictions have decided that they're going to adopt a policy to, to, to advance since it's optional. I, I don't know where we are within that. Yeah, wi- within the.
Yeah, I, I would just add to that, that I agree with everything that Genevieve has said and that the state legislature enacted the Health and Safety Code sections under discussion several years ago, authorizing this to occur presumably because the legislature had the foresight to contemplate, you know, this eventuality and wanted to give the cities the opportunity to, you know, set forth these policies, have, have the ability to make these payments, pursue the owners, et cetera. So the law's there. It's not something that we have looked at previously. And frankly, we don't anticipate that the situation's likely to arise frequently. But we wanted to, and we hope that it doesn't, but we wanted to be in a position to be able to, you know, make these decisions if the situations arise and the city deems inappropriate.
Appreciate. Thank you. That was actually my second question. You answered it, which is frequency. It sounds like it's very low. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had three follow-up questions. Your first line talked about the local enforcement agency and your second one said it was the city. So does the resolution call out City of San Rafael as a local enforcement agency?
Yes, and the policy is specific to the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then you also talked about direct and indirect costs that could be recovered. Is that things like staff time? Just included in that? Like, I was kind of curious, like, what is that bucket?
Yeah, I, I, I would think that we would, we could recover staff time. Certainly the costs for the legal costs would likely be the area that would be encumbered the most. If we needed to bring any legal action against the owner for, for recovery of costs.
I would imagine it would be consistent with the way we approach code enforcement, which, you know, in the event we need to pursue enforcement actions, if people don't comply, we have daily rates that we charge for staff time and attorney time. With court fees, we tend to get fees waived because we're a public agency, but I believe that that's what the legislature intended to accommodate.
Okay, thank you. And the last question, if this action were to be appealed by the owner of the building, is there a cost for that appeal? On there, yeah, I'm just curious because often when things are appealed to the council, there's an additional cost.
We don't have one written into the policy. The appeals process, which is the more lengthy one that would be for the reimbursement, is required in this code and the timeframes are exactly as the law requires. So we didn't write in any kind of cost that the owner would pay because it's mandated.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. Thank you for that clarification. And we'll see if there's other questions or comments from the public on this item. I'll look into the chambers. Any comments? Yeah, come, come on down.
Albatere Gersel Park. Is there any opportunity for landlords to abuse this law by forcing a red tick situation and forcing tenants out of their properties for their own purposes?
Thank you. What we'll do is gather all the questions and then ask for answers at the end. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone else in the chambers. Anyone virtually would like to comment on this item?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. And if commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. And we do have a couple hands.
Hi, my name's Stephen Bingham. I'm from Terre Lenda and didn't tend to comment on this, but it's an interesting and good law in place is one potential defect which needs to be addressed. Probably implementation, but if you imagine, and I like Councilwoman Bushy's sort of very practical questions. The person who gets, has to move out of the apartment is going to maybe disappear to her brother's place in Valle or someplace. So there needs to be some mechanism to ensure that on-site when the emergency personnel are there, that the family is notified of this whole process, perhaps given paperwork, a number to call so that, because that's probably the last time that city is going to see that person. And particularly with language barriers and all the rest, I can imagine a lot of people not being able to benefit from this wonderful program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
I do see another hand.
Following on Mr. Bingham's comment, it's possible that people won't be able to benefit from this quote wonderful program, unquote, because this program is, is a diversion to begin with. This seems to have come up after the disastrous fire in the canal. And there are larger, deeper systemic questions that the City of San Rafael should be asking itself. And it's notable that they didn't, they didn't provide any update on that as they, as they commenced the meeting. What is the City of San Rafael's own liability for the fire that occurred? And I don't just mean whatever flimsy fire inspection that building was given because it was in the canal and not anywhere else. And the lives of those people don't actually matter to the City of San Rafael. This was made very clear during the first few years of the pandemic and for all of the rest of the city's conduct with regard to the Latino population and other minority populations here. But, but also, why, why was this real estate company so interested in buying that particular property? And what relationship did that have with the designation of an opportunity zone in the canal? And, you know, the city of San Rafael itself has not really investigated how much displacement has already occurred as a result of the designation of, of the canal as an opportunity zone. And what's more, we don't have any disclosure of how many of the people who are going to profit from that opportunity zone are funneling money into the campaign coffers of people like Kate Cullen. So in, in all, we have very little transparency about, you know, this particular project, but, but also there's no desire to, to take a deeper look into how do you prevent this from happening?
I see no further hands, but I will give it a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. And I heard two questions. One was a possibility, is there concern about abuse by any property owner? And, and then the second one was really furthering on what Councilmember Bushy talked about, the mechanism of notifying the tenants. And maybe there's some creative thinking there, working with San Rafael Fire Department.
Yeah. So I, I don't see how this would cause owners to manipulate a certain situation by forcing tenants out because this, in the absence of this law, they may not be required to pay them any relocation benefits, right? So this law is actually requiring them to do something that they wouldn't otherwise be, be required to pay. And then with regard to noticing of the tenants, the, the city does, will need to send notices to the tenants. And certainly if we're running into a situation where there might be, for example, language barriers, we can certainly, you know, create, I'm sure, letters that would be in, you know, Spanish or other appropriate languages to ensure that the tenants understand their rights.
Thank you. And we're hoping that this will not be something that we have to do frequently because it means that there's been a tragedy that has occurred. So thank you for that. I will turn it to the council for additional comments and then a motion. Vice Mayor?
Yes, I, I want to show my gratitude again. I, we've been so involved with all the tenants affected. I can, I know them by the first name. And they are really struggling. So I think this is something that they really need to have. You know, there is so much uncertainty right now. So I think this is going to give us them a little bit, you know, of relief, which I think is, is so important. So I really appreciate, you know, the council, the city, and, and again, all the agencies that they are involved. Legal aid of Marin is there with the tenants, kind of alliance, the city, we are there, the county. So I think is, you know, the silver lining, I think, is, is seeing the community together. And I think this policy is great in case of an emergency situation to be able to support them. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, thank you for making this available for us to consider tonight. I will be voting to approve this. I do think that the operationalization of this, and hopefully it's rare, just to make certain that every party is reached out to, but specifically tenants, to get them relief if they need it as quickly as possible. Appreciate that we're accounting for staff time and, and that we can recoup that and, and hopefully this is in place so that it compels compliance before we have to do any stick. It's more carrot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I agree with my colleagues' comments. It's a great set of rules. Hopefully we won't have to use them.
Thank you. And I'll close by saying thank you to the Assistant City Attorney. This came up, I think, over the holidays and, and there was a lot of research. To Councilmember Hill's point, they're not jurisdictions locally that I think have adopted this. It, it does exist statewide. So I know there was a lot of research and a lot of work that went in to get this in front of us today. So thank you. And I would be prepared to entertain a motion on this item.
I'd be very happy to make a motion to adopt resolution adopting policy on relocation assistance benefits to tenants displaced by an order to vacate under Health and Safety Code Section 17975.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yornz Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thanks again for all the work that you've done. Okay, our last item under the agenda items is the San Rafael Public Safety Alternative Response Team. Welcome, gentlemen. Hi, Chief. I'll turn it over to you. Why, I don't know if there's slides, but it seems like that's been finicky today. So we'll let you get started.
Todd will not have to manipulate the computer and he's going to go old school.
Oh, he is going to go old school. All right. That works for us. Oh, yeah. Okay. Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to introduce the next agenda item for your consideration. Police department staff are very excited to bring this item forward tonight. As the council will recall, the police department brought information, an informational item to the council on July 5th in reference to the development of a public safety alternative response team. As presented in concept, this alternative response resource is intended to provide services and support to the vulnerable population within our community. And also serve as a frontline resource for people in mental health crisis, for individuals experiencing homelessness, and in circumstances where members of our community need support with substance abuse issues. There are other services through this team, but those are key. So in consideration of the informational report that was presented this past summer, the council authorized staff to develop a request for proposal to identify a provider for these services. Tonight, I want to reintroduce Lieutenant Todd Behringer. Lieutenant Behringer has served as the project manager for this proposed alternative response program. And Lieutenant Behringer will present this item for the council's consideration tonight.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Good evening. As Chief mentioned, six months ago, Chief Spiller and I introduced the concept of an alternative response team to the council. The concept of an alternative response team has been an emerging, emerging practice in our nationwide emergency response system to replace traditional first responders involving people in crisis with social workers, mental health counselors, and medical staff. Staff worked with Ben Adam Klimmer, a consultant from Crisis Consulting, to identify the best model for the City of San Rafael. Crisis Consulting's analysis involved a collaborative effort by the Fire Department, the City of Nevada, and the County of Marin. Based on an examination of the calls for service to the police and fire departments, an alternative response team would alleviate the need for public safety responses and support the need to utilize para-professionals as an alternative to public safety staff. The types of calls, types of calls for service that this team would respond to would include individuals who are intoxicated or under the influence of narcotics, transports for mental health services, counseling, support, and intervention for depressed or suicidal subjects, assisting the public with emergency shelter resources, transportation to detox services, welfare checks where no crime is suspected, reports of disoriented subjects, transports for non-emergency medical care, and many others. These para-professionals would be comprised of crisis counselor and emergency medical technician operating out of modified ambulance or similar van and would be tied into the emergency dispatch system. These para-professionals serve as integrated health first responders. These responders will have knowledge of our local homeless services and will be skilled in engaging with people who are experiencing homelessness, substance abuse, or who are presenting in crisis. The team will serve to bridge and connect that individual to the best supportive services, alleviating the impact on limited, on the limited public safety resources. In July 2022, the city council directed staff to release a request for proposals for implementation of an alternative response team. In October 2022, a propose, a request for proposal was disseminated and outreach, outreach was conducted to interested community-based organizations. There were several interested community-based organizations who supported the program, but ultimately only one proposal was received from Petaluma People's Services Center. Staff convened a committee to review the proposal, which was comprised of members from the Fire Department, Police Department, Marin County's Mobile Crisis Response Team, the city's homeless services director, and a member of the community-based organization providing support services to the City of San Rafael. The proposal outlined the work that Petaluma People's Services Center is currently doing in Petaluma, Rona Park, and Catati. PPSC has become a leader in the North Bay with providing alternative response teams to the communities they serve. Their teams respond independently of law enforcement or the Fire Department to deescalate situations, identify the needs of the individual, and make voluntary transfers to emergency rooms, physician's office, shelter, or other community-based organizations that provide support. They also have the ability to conduct follow-up outreach and locate individuals who may require additional needs beyond the initial crisis. PPSC and Crisis Consulting is recommending replicating their existing model for the City of San Rafael based on the success they have seen in the cities where they are operating in the North Bay. These cities have comparable-sized populations, demographics, and annual calls for service. As stated before, they would pair a crisis counselor with an emergency medical technician. PPSC refers to this two-person team as a safe team, which is also known as specialized assistance for everyone. Due to the skillset of each team member, they are able to respond to a variety of physical and mental health issues which manifest themselves in calls for service to the police and fire departments. While there may be a co-response by police or Fire Department personnel on some types of calls for service, once the situation is stabilized, options would be made available based on the safe team's capabilities. After a full year of operating PPSC's safe team in Petaluma and the fall 2021's launch of Rona Park and Catati, the safe team responded to over 4,125 calls for service. We anticipate, based on the previous analysis of calls for service in the city of Santa Fe, that our our results will be comparable. They would employ three full-time crisis intervention workers, three full-time emergency medical technicians, one full-time program program navigator, and a part-time program director, program manager, and a part-time licensed clinical support team member. They will be staffed to operate 12 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. This team will be working collaboratively with Marin County's Mobile Crisis Response Team and is meant to complement their work, not compete. Over the past year, we've worked with Marin County's Mobile Crisis Leadership Team on the development of many aspects from analyzing data, availability, capabilities, and how the teams could work cohesively with one another. Many of these types of calls for service that will be handled by the safe team would not be handled by Mobile Crisis Response Team because it falls outside their scope of work. However, acute mental health crisis calls requiring involuntary commitments is an area that Marin County's Mobile Crisis Response Team will continue to support. Annual staffing costs for the project are estimated at $604,464, including benefits, with an additional non-personnel indirect and city administrative costs of $167,536 for a total annual program cost of $775,000 and an additional one-time program startup cost of $100,000. The one-time startup cost will include the cost of procuring a transport van, radios, mobile data terminals, medical supplies, uniforms, phones, etc. If approved, staff anticipates using funds from various sources, including funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, cannabis tax revenue, previously allocated funding from the Marin County Major Crimes Task Force, as well as other potential funding sources for the three-year pilot program. Additionally, PPSC is aware there may be other federal and state grant opportunities to assist with funding in the future. And if the three-year pilot program is approved, work will begin immediately. PPSC is prepared to start recruiting, hiring, and training personnel in addition to procuring equipment such as uniforms, radios, and vehicle upfitting. Police and fire will train dispatchers and first responders on how to best utilize this team based on best practices and operating procedures. The goal will be to soft roll out to start handling calls for service by mid-March. As new staff are onboarded, safe team's availability will increase, eventually getting to the point where they are operating 365 days per year. To evaluate the success of the program, police, fire, and PPSC will work together to evaluate and track outcomes, such as the number of calls handled, demographics of those served, self-initiated versus calls for service, number of diversions from jail and emergency departments, the number of individuals who were assisted with getting housed, and the number of transports in the disposition. Additionally, police and fire will determine the direct and indirect impacts on their response times, availability for calls for service, and enhanced outcomes. I'd like to take this time to introduce the Director of Petaluma People's Services, Elise Hapo. It's Elise in the back. Staff recommends the council authorize the city manager execute a professional services agreement with Petaluma People's Services for a three-year pilot alternative response program not to exceed $750,000 per year with an additional $100,000 in startup costs in the first year. Staff and PPSC are happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant. Thank you, Elise, for coming. If there are questions, we will definitely turn to you as well. I will start with the Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you. I'm I'm excited about this this pro, you know, program and see how we can help you know, people in the street sometimes with emergencies. I guess you kind of like answer a question that I had around the they how to evaluate the results of the program. And so you gave already some answers around how you're going to look at the outcomes. But how often are you going to do this? Because it's a three-year pilot.
PPSC needs almost I imagine that they will replicate something similar here, and then monthly they'll be providing us with stats.
Okay, great. At least, did you did you want to add on that, being that you do have successful programs already up and running? So maybe what you've learned, like best practices from those.
Thank you. Thank you. It's nice to be here and and thank you for the opportunity to bid on this. I think he hit the nail on the head. It's communication that makes it work. Starting with those incoming calls into dispatch and how dispatch then learns to change some of the the work that they do in sending out the safe team to respond or sending the safe team to attach to the police department or sending the police department to clear the situation and then bring in the the safe team. So that communication happens on a regular basis. I'm going to tell you right now, I spend way too much time with chiefs of police. Never ever thought I would do that, but it's it's all about communication and that's the key goal. I think one of the things that didn't come out in the report that it's important to know is PPSC was lucky enough to through a partnership with the Rona Park, Petaluma, and Catati and this county to be able to get the CCMU, which is the first round of crisis intervention funding from the state of California. And with that, we are purchasing a database that will connect to the 988 system so that when 988 calls come in, which are suicide calls, or people who are considering suicide, they'll be able to link directly to the database. And so the dispatch will be able to see this individual is living in San Rafael, needs the the safe team to respond immediately because they're calling in and being de-escalated by 988, but then also could be de-escalated in person too. So that's another key to how the communication link will work.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, I have a couple more questions. Yeah, thank you. So the other one is as we have a lot of our members of the community that speak like another language, like especially Spanish, and do are you planning to hire people that are going to be bilingual? To Spanish?
Yes, one of the part of the proposal was a bilingual navigator. And maybe Elise can talk more specifically about that navigator's role. But yes, that was in the proposal.
Yes, and and currently, all of our teams have somebody who speaks Spanish and somebody who speaks English, whether it's be the crisis intervention or the EMT, but there's always the the ability to have both languages covered. At some point, we'll probably have to add a third and a fourth language. But our bilingual navigator is somebody that was not originally brought into the Petaluma pilot, in part because Petaluma People's Services Center is a human services center providing 90 programs in the city of Petaluma from housing to fair housing. I almost had a question earlier. But but once we got into Rona Park and Catati, we realized that not all of them have a core center of human services and human services are spread out. And that bilingual navigator is going to be key to getting individuals who are part of this program, who have contact with the safe team, access to additional services that are available here in San Rafael or through the county of Marin. I do want to point out that the Marin Crisis Team leadership came up and spent a day riding on the safe van. And they turned around and said, we want one of these. So so it is a different model than the crisis intervention team. We run in partnership with Sonoma County's Crisis Intervention Team, but it's more hand-hand face-to-face time with the police department and the staff that are working in public service to connect them to additional services.
Okay, great. Thank you. And my last question. So you you say it's going to cover like 12 hours, 365 days, seven days a week. I assume that the other 12 hours are covered by the police or our emergency response team?
Yes, that is correct. And also Marin County's Mobile Crisis Response Team will be available as well.
And what are the hours that we will cover?
Tentatively, I think we're thinking around eight to eight. Although we'll see, but I think tentatively eight to eight, eight in the morning to eight p.m.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I know this was last summer when we first looked at it. I continue to be encouraged. I have a couple of questions, and maybe this is more for PPSC. In the other three municipalities, Petaluma, Rona Park, Catati, did it, did they all start this way with, you know, a 12-hour and then it would ramp up more towards 18 and 24? Is that a typical journey of those three?
Yeah, yes. So in Petaluma, we launched in July of 2020 with a approval from the City Council in March of 2020. So we turned that around really fast. And we started out with 18 hours in Petaluma. In Rona Park, we started in October of 2020, and we just went 24 hours a day in Rona Park and Catati today. So we, you know, there is this ramp up. It's understanding what calls are coming in, what the needs are. Petaluma in the afternoon, early evening, and then late into the evening has become a community where tourists come. And so we have seen an uptick in people who are actually not Petaluma residents, but utilizing the services because they would have been a police call. And so the change and the evolution of that has kind of happened as we go along. And I think a slow start, I think Ben Adam Kleiner will tell you, a slow start helps us get to know San Rafael. It helps us get to know the community-based organizations. We already have a relationship with a lot of them. For five years, we ran the youth employment program for the county. And so we do know a lot of the nonprofits, but it's getting to know the business owners. And then it's also getting to know the staff at the police department and developing a connection with dispatch that is so key to this project. Yeah.
Thank you. And maybe this is, I have another, one more question because you've done this. Thank you for being here. Do you find that year over year, as I mean, it sounds like it's not 2020 is the is the most, the furthest one out in in history, but that you find that it's it holds steady as far as the number of calls is at around eight to 10%?
Oh, no, the the number of calls are coming in faster and furious. So one thing that we have now that rings directly into dispatch in all of the cities is a non-emergency safe number. So you don't just have to dial 911. You can dial a non-emergency number, it rings into dispatch, they know it's a safe team call, and they're able to pace that out. We continue to see a pace pacing. I was just recently, just this afternoon, up at a meeting with on trafficking, human trafficking, and I shared with the chiefs from Rona Park and Catati that I was coming down here to do the presentation, and we talked about how the time limits and the start, and they said four months, and they're going to be saying we want a 24-hour team. So that's just just what what we what we've learned. You know, again, the teams, the teams are will be shared across the different jurisdictions. I think that's really key. You're going to get strong leadership, people who have been from the get-go, from the first day the van rolled out in Petaluma down here helping respond to calls initially, and then in a leadership role to do additional training for the teams that will be specifically based down here in San Rafael. I think we we've been very strategic about keeping the teams flexible and and being able to respond in the other cities. One of the things I truly believe in and and use as a leadership tool at Petaluma People's Services Center is is we invest in evidence-based programs, programs that have proven out. And we're using a model from Eugene, the Kahoots model, but we've taken that Kahoots model and really looked at what works in California, what works in our communities and communities our size, and really kind of expanded and 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 allow the program to really grow to meet the needs of the specific community. Because what's what we have in Catati is completely different from what we have in Rona Park. And what we have in Rona Park is completely different from what we have in Petaluma. But we hope and we do cross-train the teams to respond together in these different cities so that you are getting quality, high-trained individuals responding to every single one of those calls.
Thank you. I have one more question that is more it's more operational. I'm curious, when we have fractional positions, is it within a shift that you that that person is there or only certain times a week that that individual is divided across the the days?
They they would be for a full shift down here. And yeah, they're already are are some of our employees that live in Vallejo are already raising their hand for down here. They knew I was coming. They're like, can we be in San Rafael? So so, you know, I think, and we actually have somebody in the leadership role who lives in San Rafael, running the team for us. So there's there's a lot of connection to this community already. But when you do a shift, you're on 12 hours in one one shift, that team is together for those 12 hours. So we're not breaking it apart. We're not there's not a loss in continuity. Yeah.
What I meant was there are three rules that are, there's one say that's a quarter of an FTE for program directors. Was that more just how?
It's just going to be shared across across the team. So that program director is going to be on the phone with the police liaison, spending time in dispatch, connecting the team down here, doing presentations at the elementary schools, connecting with the community-based organizations, updating our data resource. So it's it's the benefit you get is you're getting this expertise now that's kind of spread across a wider swath of our communities.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy.
Well, this sounds like a fantastic program, and I'm I'm sure that it will be warmly received. And maybe too warmly, because how are we going to pay for this? That's really the the issue. I guess I'm looking at the city manager and and the chief. If the forecast is right, that our initial plan of 12 hours a day is just going to lead to people requiring requesting 24 hours a day. And by the description of this program, that seems very likely. What? What what what's the point? What are we going to do?
Staff is also hoping that we have that much success with the program that we're put in that position. And for all the reasons that were already mentioned, we think it does make sense to start at the at the 12 hours a day. But we could imagine ramping up in the future. We were able to cobble together funds for this three-year pilot. And what I was would recommend is that the council review it, at least on an annual basis for the funding, so that you were not just waiting to the end of the three-year period to make a determination, but we're looking at it far before that and regularly to see how we'd be able to either maintain it or increase the amount of hours based on what the results are. I think one of the things that that we're really encouraged about, and I know PPSC can help us with, is grant funding and getting funds from leveraging our funds with source from other sources of funding. And I think that we've, because we've got a period of time in the pilot, we've got some time to to do that and look into other sources of funding for for either maintaining for a longer period of time or in addition to expanding the hours. So I think we've got a good plan in place for the short run and by having the pilot, that will give us the opportunity to look at grants and other funding sources should we want to expand it going forward. And then it would also, for the city portion, would need to be built into a city budget that we'd work with the council with on an annual basis.
And I presume we'll be open to the collaboration with the county on their mobile crisis on operations, which apparently they're coveting this sort of perhaps there's some sort of a of common ground that can be found there and on some additional funding opportunities through through that avenue.
We'd be happy to explore that. I know that Todd is Lieutenant Behringer is in regular communication with the county and the Mobile Crisis Team and the different management staff at the county on this. So we've been working with the county on it from the very beginning, when when one of the original ideas was perhaps looking at an expansion of their program. And we decided that this program made more sense for San Rafael. But we've been in communication from the beginning and will continue to do so.
That's great. Thank you.
I I do have to say, the Biden administration has put a focus on funding crisis intervention teams. And one of the reasons we got up and going so fast in Petaluma is that the word on the street was that you had to have a team operating and actually providing services. And so there was kind of this mass scramble to actually have that up. Because because PPSC has been running it, and we are part of this larger county crisis stabilization unit funding that's coming from the state of California. We are also preparing and and leveraging ourselves to be able to be able to tap into managed Medi-Cal or CalAid, which is what the state of California is looking at funding some of this. So those vulnerable individuals who are unhoused and those types of and on Medi-Cal or Medicaid would be able to be billed for the services. And so we're 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 gearing up. We're we're setting ourselves up. We already are able to bill Medi-Cal and do it all the time. And so it's just a continuation of our programming in order to be able to to leverage all of the funds that become available.
I like the way you think. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. No, it was a great question. I had a follow-up, and you answered part of it in terms of the state funding that you're that you've already received in the federal funding. I'm just curious. Marin County has several FQHCs, federally qualified health centers. Has there been any funding that's come through that source? Again, just
So 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 the CalAid money is a partnership through the FQHCs and, you know, the the partnership that we have with the safe team with our FQHCs is instrumental. with the safe team with our FQHCs is instrumental. Oftentimes, an individual who's unsheltered can get really, really sick. And we heard an incident about not getting to an FQHC to get treatment for a urinary tract infection that then becomes a hospitalization and that costs us all a lot of money and it's that individual gets really, really sick. Our safe team is able to do those transports to health centers because we're able to transport voluntarily. And so people, especially our unsheltered individuals that are living in the communities that we're currently serving, they use the safe team to get to some medical appointments that are absolutely necessary to keep them out of the ER and keep them out of the the hospital situation. I think I just sent Todd the data from the last quarter for Rona Park and Cotati. But we start to, we're starting to really recognize the number of diversions out of the ERs and also the diversions out of the jails. And that's where the safe team starts to earn its real keep. Yeah, and so those hospitals should be a funding partner of all of us.
Yes, well, we agree with you there. And and there are two FQHCs in San Rafael, so that's good to know. Thank you. We'll see if there are additional questions that come up. Thank you so much. So I will turn it to the public for additional questions and or comments on this item. Is there anyone in the chambers that would like to comment on this item? Okay, not seen anyone. Is there anyone virtually who'd like to comment on this item?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I do see one hand raised at this time.
Hi, it's Stephen Bingham again, Chair Linda. I just want to thoroughly congratulate Chief Spiller and the police department for being so enthusiastic about supporting this proposal. It's it's a historic moment, and I hope this is a banner headline in the IJ tomorrow. I only have one brief concern about the 12 hours, which the lieutenant mentioned would probably be eight AM to eight PM. My understanding is that many of the calls for service are going to be mental health crises, which typically happen at night. And I wonder if the hours, if it's really restricted to 12 hours for now, couldn't overlap the afternoon and evening, be something like four PM to four AM or, I don't know, but I think in terms of particularly mental health crises, the middle of the day from breakfast to dinner is not when most of those crises occur. So I'd like to suggest some kind of adjustment there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bingham.
I do see one more hand raised.
This is Ava Crisanti, and I I couldn't disagree more with Mr. Bingham, who will never have to be on the receiving end of this quote safe team. What you've just heard is the police present a proposal for a safe team because they themselves are not safe. They have, you know, Chief Spiller deserves no credit. There's, there's been no responsibilities taken for the savage beating of Mateo. And now, in order to keep money flowing into their department, they want to have a safe team. That's, that should be called out for the bull bleep that it is. We're already seeing, and and you you might want to ask, why are they calling it a safe team and not a hot team? Because hot teams already faltering. So basically, this is just a way to keep money flowing into the police department if you want. And if you want to see like kind of a prototype of the kind of abuses and bad behavior. And I went to Stephen Bingham many times about this, and he he rebuffed me every time. But the internment camp that was being run by Lynn Murphy, the quote mental health liaison for the San Rafael Police Department, that abusive camp, which was called out in the New Yorker magazine, was so heinous, but it was, it was absolutely the model for this sort of dysfunctional caca that you guys are 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 proposing now. You know, you cannot reform your police departments by adding additional funds into them to corrupt the, you know, innocent people who are going to be dragged into this safe team idea. In the end, they're going to be reporting to the police, they're going to be calling the police. And instead of doing that, why don't you just actually use the funds you were already given to, you know, help house the unhoused people?
I see no further hands, but I will give it a few more seconds. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and bring it back to the council. So I heard one question just again about the hours, which I know we spoke to, but maybe you could just speak. I don't know. Elise has given us, it goes from this to 24, but yes, just really the learning that we'll do or how we'll incorporate that.
Thanks, Mayor Kate. So as Lieutenant Berenger mentioned, the 24 hour deployment, excuse me, the 12 hour deployment is anticipated to be eight to eight. And we look at our calls for service and where they where they peak, we can adjust this at any time. And as we continue to evaluate the activity, as we continue to evaluate the statistics and the responses or diversions, we could adjust those times as necessary during the pilot. So I guess I want the council to feel comfortable with that operationally. And of course, we would work closely with, you know, our stakeholders and Petaluma People's Services to make sure that that's working in terms of what the staff is experiencing on the street.
Thank you. Yeah, no, we appreciate the further clarification. So I'll bring it back for any additional questions or comments, and I'll start with the vice mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, these are questions that was kind of like my question after that. So so I'm excited about this service. I can't wait to start and start seeing some results. So good luck. And thank you so much for for this proposal. I think is is definitely a good alternative that we don't have to use the force every time that there is a crisis. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I know our businesses and residents are going to be very pleased on to have this service available and very much looking forward to it. And also the just the humanitarian component of it to get these people the help that they need. So can't wait to get to work and see the results on San Rafael streets. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yeah, just thank you, Lieutenant Berenger. Thank you, Chief Spiller. Thank you, Elise from PPSC for being here today. This is our direction coming to fruition pending our vote. But thank you for considering San Rafael. Glad you proposed and look forward to seeing this come alive.
Thank you. Thank you. And I'll just build on that by saying our our businesses, I think, will really appreciate it. We were actually meeting with them last week, and one of the things we had heard from the chamber, I'm sure you heard this in the cities where you're working, is people don't know where to, who to call. It's not really a police level, but they're really concerned about behavior they might see on the street. So having that access, that alone, I I know will bring great relief for both the businesses as well as the individual on the street. And I did want to follow up on something that you had said regarding the Kahoots model, because people might not know what that is. I know what that is. So Kahoots is actually a program that was started up in Eugene, I think it was Eugene, Oregon, years ago. And it was, has been very, very successful. And there are many jurisdictions throughout the United States and in California that have taken it and kind of, you said, as Lee said, kind of molded it to fit the jurisdiction and what's manifesting there. So this is not something that hasn't been proven or hasn't been tried. In fact, the very opposite, this has been incredibly successful throughout, which is why we are looking at that and finding the funding to do so. I'm really proud of the fact that we're doing this here, Marin. I'm hoping that our fellow jurisdictions will follow suit. This is something that has shown in other jurisdictions to make a real difference for the people on the street, which is ultimately what we are doing here. So thank you, Elise. We really look forward to working with you. I know that Chief is already enjoying working with you. Lieutenant, thank you for all that you've done researching this from, I know you met with the folks at Kahoots and then really brought us to this moment this evening. So without your enthusiasm and resilience behind it, I know we wouldn't be here. So thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion on this item.
I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Petaluma People's People's Services Center for a three year pilot alternative response program, not to exceed $775,000 per year with an additional $100,000 in startup costs for the first year.
And I'll second. Thank you. Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yorn Giladi?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you. I look forward to the success on our streets. Thank you. The last item on our agenda is the San Rafael Successor Agency. We have our quarterly investment report that was part of the staff report. Does anyone want to hold the one item from the consent calendar? No, not seen that. I'll open public comment on this item. Anyone would want to comment on the successor agency? I don't see anyone in the chambers. So anyone online like to comment on the successor agency quarterly investment report?
To comment on Zoom, please use the raise hand feature. If commenting by phone, please press star nine. Once you hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, please press star six to unmute yourself. Each speaker has two minutes to provide public comment and will be muted once time has elapsed. I see no hands up at this time. Give it a few more seconds. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and request a motion on this item.
I move the consent calendar.
Your second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Member Bushy?
Aye.
Member Hill?
Aye.
Vice Chair Yorn Giladi?
Aye.
Chair Kate?
Aye, that motion carries four zero. Thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.